Oh.
I can hear everybody, please rise for the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First off, I'd like to thank everybody for coming to the meeting tonight. If you haven't already, if you would, please make sure you sign in. So we have a record of the attendance. Appreciate it. Uh, Jim, do you want to want us to wait for Holly or is it such as you can start?
On our way.
We'll wait for Holly then. Uh, normally, Lauren, as you see, your uh, your time, but I think you've been uh, Mr. Garrett has asked to uh, take your place. So sir, if you would please to the podium.
By no means, I'm not Laura, but hopefully I can fill in just okay.
Good evening, trustees and folks. Uh, Gary Kiozy, Delaware County Health Commissioner. Uh, I appreciate you having me tonight to just provide a couple of brief updates and get some face time with you all. Uh, I've been appointed health commissioner since January first of last year. Um, as I think you all can understand, having twenty-five political subdivisions makes it a bit challenging to get out to everyone, but I appreciate your time tonight. Just wanted to highlight a couple of things that's going on with the health district. March twenty-first is our annual district advisory council meeting. That's where the municipalities have a chance to uh, vote in a new board of health member. So the current member whose term is up, these are five-year terms, uh, is Amy Howerton of Trenton Township. Uh, and as of today, she is choosing not to seek uh, reappointment to the board of health. So that seat will be open. Um, at the direction of that council chair, I've been soliciting applications. There's a handout here as well as in the hall. Uh, any resident of the health district is permitted to be on the district advisory council, or excuse me, the board of health. So if you are interested or any of your residents, um, they can email me their sort of letter of interest and then I'll present that to the council. It's a public meeting. Again, that's March twenty-first at our new building, four seventy South Sandusky Street. So I just wanted to highlight that. Couple other things. Uh, we do have our current uh, twenty twenty-four Creating Healthy Communities mini grants. Uh, this is a uh, health department funded project up to twenty-five thousand dollars for active living, healthy eating, indoor/outdoor built environment grants. Um, it's a really simple application. Uh, last year, we awarded grant money to Liberty Township, the city of Sunbury, Delaware, as well as the village of Ashley totaling over twenty-five thousand dollars for uh, outdoor active living projects. Again, this is a handout and we'll have it over there as well. The last thing I want to mention is we've been a recipient of some grant funding and we have purchased um, eighty-seven water bottle filling stations. Uh, those are open uh, for really any business entity, nonprofit, uh, any, generally, anyone in the health district can apply for those. It's a simple six-question questionnaire, uh, and then we provide that water bottle filling station for free and the cost to that entity is just the installation. So if you have a general drinking fountain and you want to switch that out with the drinking fountain, water bottle, filling station combo, uh, I really encourage you to submit. We have eighty-seven of them. The deadline is March first. It's super easy, uh, and we have plenty to go around right now, so.
Those all indoor or the can it can it be outdoor?
Uh, indoor/outdoor.
Indoor/outdoor.
Mm-hmm.
All right, any questions? Thanks, sir.
Yes, thank you so much.
Uh, we'll also have uh, Sheriff Paulzer. Did you have uh, something you'd like to?
Sure.
Thank you, sir.
I'm Jeff Paulzer. I'm uh, your sheriff since last year. Uh, Russ Martin was previous sheriff. He retired in April and I got appointed and uh, hopefully continue being your sheriff after this election this year. Wanted to just give you some updates as far as what's going on as far as the sheriff's office in Harlem Township. The good news is it's pretty darn safe in Harlem Township. The statistics basically show that some of the top calls here are similar to the rest of the county. Uh, although it's actually less in some areas. Certain things you're gonna have all over the county, domestic disputes, we roll on those. You've got suspicious persons, suspicious vehicles, uh, some burglar alarms. One other thing I'd like to highlight is uh, well-being checks. Uh, we've noticed across our area and across, I think, Ohio in different areas too, that the uh, mental health calls that we go to have increased over the last several years. And this is an interesting challenge for us. Uh, when I first started many years ago, you've had some training, but not a whole lot on that. Nowadays, it's a big area we train our deputies on to make sure that they interact appropriately with people who are in a mental health crisis. So when it says well-being checks, uh, we also include in there sometimes attempted suicide, suicides, uh, we'll get calls for someone to go check. They haven't heard from him for a few days. So it's all towards a mental health, but that's a big uh, issue we have now across the county. I'm also available for any questions you have. Like I said, the big thing that we've seen thefts, larcenies out in the rural areas happen, uh, the best thing we can do is ask neighbors to call us. If you see something suspicious, call the sheriff's office. We'd rather know about it, come out and check it out, find out what's going on.
I do have a couple of questions.
Yes, sir.
Actually, with the growth that we all see coming and the changes in the population increase, what are the sheriff's department's plans to get possibly more service in our township? With this increase, and I guess the other question with the environment that we're living in in this world today, as far as what the sheriff's department is trying to do to for retention of of our officers?
But good questions. Uh, for staffing, we do see the growth. We've, I've been in meetings just like you all have or heard about the growth that's coming, especially this area. I've talked to my chief deputies. Um, we're possibly looking at adding additional folks on to cover the eastern part of the county as warranted as we move forward. Uh, right now, it seems like the staffing we have out here seems to be sufficient, but that's something we have statistical analysis all the time to see if that changes. If it does, there's other possibilities we could do. Down in the south end of the county, we've got a substation down there at Orange Road, if any of you have seen that. That's gonna change at some point in the next couple of years. We're gonna move to a different location. I don't know where yet. It'll probably still be somewhere around that generic, because we've got a lot of the population there. But there's also the possibility of having smaller substations in other places in the county. And that's one of the issues I want to look at, because we're big enough now. We're big enough now, whether it's the far western part that's starting to grow or the far eastern part, that we may look at that possibility of having deputies report directly to those areas. So it's a quicker response then. That's something we're looking at. As far as the retention, we're doing pretty good on retention. Uh, we lose very few deputies to other law enforcement agencies. Recruitment is a difficult thing. All agencies are having this. I gave the example recently at a different meeting that uh, we're all competing for the same people. And there was a young lady who had applied. She's a great candidate, uh, from central Ohio, bright young lady. She just graduated from college and she wanted to career in law enforcement. We are competing with three other agencies. That's not the way it used to be. It used to be, we'd have eighty applicants for four or five openings. Now, it's if you've got a center daughter or someone you want to uh, get into law enforcement, it's a great time to get in right now. Um, we lost out to this young lady. She ended up picking uh, Columbus suburb. Um, I I believe we were a close second on this one. It's hard to compete sometimes with some of the Columbus suburbs because they are so um, high on their wages. Our commissioners do a pretty good job of keeping us up there. But traditionally, it's hard to compete with the police department that has a separate tax specifically for safety forces. Um, when I talk to that applicants, one of the things I emphasize is if you're just looking for the highest wage you can get, we may not be it. We're pretty darn high for sheriff's offices. I think we're number two in the state, which I think is pretty darn good. But what we can offer is something different. I think we've got a great culture in the sheriff's office. We're known as one of the best sheriff's offices in the state. I think we've got a supportive community. That's a big selling point that you may not get in some of the suburbs down in Columbus. And the opportunities we have at the sheriff's office. We've got a lot of different uh, a lot of different units in the sheriff's office now. This morning, I was speaking to our school resource officers. It's hard to believe, we've got seventeen school resource officers now. That's more than anyone else in central Ohio. And there's a reason for that, that the school districts trust us, the parents trust us, and we keep on getting asked for more. Down in Columbus a few years back, the city schools wanted all the police out of the schools. Um, up in Delaware County, it's just the opposite. I get requests every year for more school resource officers, and that's a partnership we have with the commissioners and the school districts. So recruitment is difficult for all of us. Retention, we're doing pretty good. Once we get them on, we do a pretty good job of keeping them, but it's something I'm aware of too.
Anybody else? Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
All right, we'll keep moving on. When Holly shows up, we'll we'll jump back to that. Uh, need some motions to approve some minutes from our last few meetings.
I'd make a motion, we approve uh, January seventeenth. You want to do them all at once?
We can.
January seventeenth, regular meeting. January twenty-seventh, reconvene. February fifth, emergency trustee meeting. February fourteenth, special meeting.
Let's do some discussion. I have a second.
Second.
I have a motion and a second on favor. Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Uh, approval of the uh, warrants and vouchers?
Starting with warrant one-three-two-six-one through warrant number one-three-three-four-three, voucher number ten dash two thousand twenty-four through voucher number twenty-six through two thousand twenty-four. Total amount, a hundred and forty-six thousand, seven hundred and thirteen dollars and sixty-three cents.
That can move. Motion and second on favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.
Uh, motion for approval of local government officials conference for trustee Matt Jaeger and myself. The cost is six hundred dollars for the three-day conference plus meals and parking.
I have a moment. I can't a motion.
Sure, move.
I have a motion and a second, second on favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.
Approval for the two thousand twenty-four permanent appropriations in the amount of six million, one hundred and fifty thousand, seven hundred and three dollars and ninety-four cents retroactive to January one, two thousand twenty-four.
I have a couple of questions and unfortunately I just, I mean, after a lot of researching and maybe you can clarify before we go and have a motion. What was la- how does that compare to last year's budget?
Well.
Because I I I don't know if my figures were right and I wanted to wanted to see if they were.
Are you talking about what was our?
What what we what did we approve as the?
Permanent appropriation?
Yes.
Mm-hmm.
All right, well, let me look it up. My computer will work. What's your other question?
And I guess in compared with last year's budget, what what was our carryover? What did we end up with? And I and then as far as in this appropriation, the three hundred and three thousand on the salary was why how did why why did that go up so high? I'm an administrator. I guess as far as that, if you unless I'm interrupting you while I'm talking. Uh, because I know I can't, I couldn't look at a computer and have somebody talking to me at the same times. Uh, the three oh three in relationship to what the what we put out as a temporary one fifty-eight, I'm just wondering where that huge, you know, a hundred fifty thousand increase in that salary came from?
Hey, last year was five million, nine hundred and ninety-five dollars, sixty-two dollars or five million, nine hundred and ninety-five thousand, sixty-two dollars and fifty-five cents. And then trustee salary seventy, trustee staff fifty-two thousand, fiscal officer thirty-one thousand, and Matt inquired about administrator of a hundred and fifty thousand.
The that that hundred that hundred and fifty thousand is almost from last year's budget to this year's budget. Close. No.
I'd have to look up.
Well, I I'm I'm just, I'm doing some quick. No, no, it's not.
Yeah, roughly a hundred and fifty.
About a hundred and fifty thousand. Yeah. Because I I just did, I had a different number and I didn't know where I got it from. That's the reason why I wanted to ask you. Receipts, do we have, do we have anything? Do you have anything that you could provide us, Lisa, that shows what our expected receipts are coming?
I don't know. I saw it. I had emailed you guys a kind of summary report.
Once again, we need to have someone look at our emails and figure out if if you did, we'll have to figure out why. I don't, I half the emails I don't get half. Chief, I'm gonna ask you because looking at this, is this in the budget listings? I'm assuming you've seen this. Is that less than what you requested last year? Two million, three?
I believe it is, yeah. Close to core, close to the same. It it's less than what my original request was for. I do notice less than the original request for um, the temporary budget.
I guess those are the kind of things that then I'm just why, you know, why I'm asking, why my question is, is why we have that amount when my understanding that the auditor recommended five point nine, and that would have been closer to where we were last year.
Recommended five point nine?
That was what I saw.
Did you guys see estimated, the first amended estimated resources?
That was the five point nine, it's the last thing I saw there. Again, if it was another email that came out, I didn't get. That's why, that's why I've been trying to find this and then I'd be able to answer, have the answer, so I didn't have to ask you here tonight, but I haven't been able to find them. I mean, if if this is something we want to take some time to get and we can move on or we can, I mean, we can correct me if I'm wrong, we could continue right now working under the temporary budget, correct?
Wow, I I'd like it. That's why, you know, I I would like it approved tonight because I've got some stuff to do and then I've got to send it up and get approval before I can even enter it. Okay, so you wanted to know what the receipts were total?
Mm-hmm.
With all your information from last year, twenty twenty-three. Oh, you. Then. It is the first amended certificate. No, no amount.
Do you have any idea what the uh, general will increase the draw this year?
It's on there.
On there.
Unestimated resources.
Okay.
Yeah, that jumped up. This number jumped up right here.
Okay. Eight fifty before. Oh.
We need to think.
And then I, on uh, January fifteenth, I did write on that two was sent.
Well. It's hard to say yes to this one. I don't know about that. What about you, John? Right?
Can you bring this up?
Uh, yeah, I can't. I mean, I I have an issue with the three oh three.
Okay. Uh, and this is, you guys kind of saw the the need for this, so I'll hand. Yeah.
Thank you.
Uh, in order to clarify this, I kind of sat down with Lisa on Friday to understand budgets, because it's it's not my strong suite as a uh, not a finance person, but I wanted to propose the formation of a finance committee in Harlem Township. In an effort to support the work of the board of trustees and the fiscal officer within Harlem Township, I propose the creation of a dedicated finance committee. This committee will focus on budget recommendations, financial planning, grant writing, and further put fiscal planning as necessary. The finance committee will be formed to assist the board of trustees and the fiscal officer in managing the financial operations of Harlem Township. Their primary responsibility be providing, will include providing budget recommendations, ensuring effective financial planning and assisting grant writing to secure additional funding for the township. Finance committee should be composed of individuals with a strong financial background and understanding of the township needs. The committee will consist of, as a minimum, one trustee, the fiscal officer, as well as two to three township residents. The responsibilities, one, to review and provide recommendations on annual budget as proposed by each department. Uh, two, develop long-term financial strategies to ensure they will align with the township goals. Three, review monthly financial reports to monitor budget performance. Four, provide insights on financial policies and practices to improve financial efficiency. Five, present the budget to the township residents and the board of trustees. And six, grant writing. The committee will identify potential grants and assist in the writing of submission process to secure additional funding. Meeting cadence, I suggest they meet once a month. I believe that the formation of this finance committee will significantly enhance our financial management capabilities, ultimately benefiting Harlem Township's financial sustainability. Kindly request and strongly recommend you approve the proceed with this formation of this committee. Basically, what I realized is the the process of forming the budget and what we need to do to have a team to recommend to the board the best practices and working with the fiscal officer to to provide the correct information to the trustees.
Okay. This is fine, as far as I'm concerned. What's the one hundred and fifty thousand? And that's just not gonna cost a hundred and fifty thousand. This.
No, it's not gonna cost, this is just.
Understand that.
For better.
I'm asking it. I I asked. My my concern, my concern in this appropriation request is a hundred and fifty thousand over. I, that was according to, oh, I understood you right, Lisa, was about a hiring of another body? Is that what you said?
Administrator.
No, it was administrator and multiple other employees that we've identified that we needed that have been requested. And in this policy, I was talking like, oh, I talked to strategic planning and zoning, and they're like, hey, and Kendra, and they're like, yeah, we need a few extra people in. And that was kind of, oh, how do we do this? And that's when I sat down with Lisa. And this budget process was supposed to be accomplished in October, November timeframe? And that's how that that is included in there.
The unless something's changed, the conversation of a township administrator has kind of went by the wayside. Just simply because we're not that size yet.
Yeah, that farts on hold.
So what would we, I mean, the average administrator from what I believe you found, Holly, was somewhere in the one twenty to one fifty range. Am I correct?
Mm-hmm.
So basically, once again, that hundred and fifty, if that hundred and fifty thousand would have to come out of this budget, because I don't think the board is ready to move, at least my opinion, the board is ready to move with the hiring of a a hundred and fifty thousand dollar or a hundred and forty thousand, a hundred and thirty thousand dollar administrator that is not needed as this moment.
I agree with that.
Six months to a year, that may change. Nobody knows what's gonna happen, uh, but right now that's where, I mean, that's my opinion. So that being said, I guess there there's not, there's not a motion on the floor yet. Or we're discussing the approval of this, the appropriation, so what's the board's pleasure?
Appropriations, you want a day or two to kind of soak it in better?
I think the hundred and fifty thousand needs to come out. At least.
Yeah, I agree with that. May leave uh, twenty-five in there or something for
Some part-time help?
Yeah.
And is that, that's the, was my understanding that we were requesting additional help or bodies or employees to come in? And this is my first budget on the township. I don't know your budget. I don't, Lisa, we're like, how do, how much, how much do we, do we have, do we have the money for this? And this is where I kind of was, it was confusing. And so that's why I plan to create a committee so we can better get advised on the same page of what what we needed.
And I and I and I think the committee is an excellent idea and that committee may come back in six weeks and look at me and say that you should have put a hundred and fifty thousand dollars more in.
Understand.
Uh, you know, but that committee, I mean, that we would give that committee a chance to do that and to see where we really need to be. I I think the committee is an excellent idea. It's just, I, that that number just kind of threw me at first and then I now I I see that that's where it was from. I I think originally. Oh, God, almost two years ago, when I think I actually came and I was asking for a township administrator. Decided then that we were, and now that in hindsight, being twenty twenty, I look back, we were too small. Staff-wise.
Right.
So I don't know.
It was in the. Came through that with a whole quick strategy guide. It's one of the strong recommendations in there.
Yeah, it was. It was. And the the board. The board for better choice of word shot it down.
Okay.
I don't know. It's tactfully say that, other than the fact they voted no. Um. So.
Well, I could have a hundred and twenty-five thousand somewhere else. Spread it or take it out. It'd still be the same total that you guys are voting for tonight if I put it in other areas. Like Mike's computer stuff. I could put some in his zoning stuff. And then do you guys want to do a security? We can do that.
And our and our and our resource, I guess, I guess here's here's my, you know, I when I, when I look at my checkbook at home. I know how much money is in there. I know how much money is coming into there. I'm looking at how much we want to spend. I I just don't see how much money is coming in. And that's what I was asking for. I want to, you know, that that I, you know, I want to make sure that if we approve a six point one million dollar budget. That Harlem Township is going to have six point one million dollars.
Yeah, on that estimated resources, that's why.
Yeah.
You're bringing it in. Yeah.
That's what I didn't have in front of me. That's what I'm just, you know, if I have that, then I can look at that and in all fairness, I can say, okay, but. Yes, I would like to see either that move to something else.
Or keep twenty-five thousand.
I'd say, yeah, just administrative twenty-five thousand. And if we have to, like I said, if your committee comes to us in six months and said. Hey, Dumpy, you should have left it alone. And, you know, I'll stand before everybody and say, I should have left it alone.
Well, all that's going to be in the ledger, so. I can add more money. For the computer, for the security. Do you want to do? Is that okay? And leave the amount the same?
We can, yeah, I mean, if if you're telling me the money's there, you showed me that the money is going to be there, I'm okay.
Yeah.
I just, I just, I did not have anything in front of me that. I could find. I know you sent it apparently, but it didn't get to me. That shows that we had that much money coming in. I didn't see where that was.
Yeah, on one fifteen. Uh, two thousand twenty-four, I sent the.
First, I'm going to shake my computer.
Yeah. I mean, I'm telling you so you can look.
No, I I I will. Trust me, I will. I I'll shake my computer really hard when I get on. Seems to work for me. So pleasure in mind.
Okay. I would approve the. Twenty-four permanent appropriations, given the change, uh, changes that was discussed, moving. Uh, the money, the hundred twenty-five, is it going to be a hundred twenty?
Yeah.
Moving that into other areas. For IT.
Lisa, how does that change the the fringe benefit? That isn't that a, that's a percentage of what that salary is. So that's also going to change, right?
Mm-hmm.
Or are you already, without my trustee Catholic High School math?
Yeah, I I I would fix it.
Okay, so that'll be, that'll be changed too.
That I would, yeah.
Okay. Okay, I'm just making sure. Sorry, David, I mean.
That's fine. With the the gross dollars of the budget being the same, remaining the same.
Okay. So I have a motion to have a second. Second, roll call vote, please.
Jackson.
Hi.
Jaeger.
Hi.
Richardson.
Hi.
No, some tears.
All right. It was a long process to get to the end. The next motion to approve the removal of the credit card user, Barb Walker.
Hello.
And please. So they've made a motion to authorize removal of cardholder Bart Walker. From First Commonwealth Bank Credit Card. And Home Depot accounts authorize Lisa Hershey on behalf of the trustees to complete removal from credit card account. And destroy Bart Walker's credit cards. And it was seconded by Mr. Jaeger. Motion of the second, all in favor, I.
Right.
I'll post same sign. Uh, Township Credit Card Update. Is that you, Lisa?
Yes. Uh, raising the credit card limit to thirty thousand in between the bank being closed on holidays, employees being off for holidays and vacations. The bank representative I'd been working with had developed health problems too. She had been in and out of work. The credit card limit had to be processed for approval first. Before we could order the credit cards for trustee Jaeger and Kendra. I had no update information to give until I received an email early Friday morning. Which I had. Emailed that in Kendra. On February the sixteenth, two thousand twenty-four, stating the bank had raised. The credit limit and they had put a rush on the credit cards. Both credit cards were delivered Friday. So they overnighted them. So we're done with that. Off the books.
So the credit cards are in the proper hands. They're open, they're running.
Should have.
And safe.
Or whatever, they're.
Yes.
Thank you.
And then Amazon business account. I'd been advised by the bank to remove Harlem Township bank information. For security reasons and with the payments being denied. On Amazon side, but not showing up on our bank side at all, that it was the bank that was denying it. I had three times put it in on January of four hundred and forty dollars and it kept getting denied. Previous in December. Two times it got denied. She did. So we are over putting the bank and there's the security reasons. Now everybody, you know, got credit cards. They can use their credit cards. We can set right up online. For Kinder to use hers, for Tom to use his, for me to use mine. No more trying to. Make payments with our bank information because it wasn't working for some reason. So. That's it. I'm done.
Okay. Holly, we waited for you. We waited for you.
How many times have I been here? You could have that chiming down.
Well, we didn't get lost.
Thank you. I'm happy to be here tonight. It's been a little while since I've. I've been here to give you an update. Um, the strategic planning committee has continued to work on implementation of the Quick Strategy Guide. Um, as you're aware, uh, through the summer months, we, uh, were able to adopt. Um, several overlay districts, so we now have three of those in place. Um, over the last and over the fall and winter months, um, the strategic planning committee was looking at ways to. Um, expand the borders of some of the overlay districts, especially along the Trenton Road to six oh five area. Um, there are no definitive answers of. Um, come out of those meetings. They've just been conversations. And the committee has also, um, asked me to look at. Um, the center village area and, um, how we can start looking at the overlay for that and connecting, uh, walkways and, um. Making that, uh, more walkable development type area. So I am working, um, with an architect, um, to get some drawings of that area. Um, he's put together some mood boards for me, um, basically showing different styles that, um. Uh, would look appropriate within the center village area as well as signage, et cetera. Um, so I'm working with the strategic planning committee on those things and then waiting for his drawings to come through. We're also, um, starting to enter into the next phase of, uh, the strategic plan, which is. To understand how those overlay districts, um, work, um, with a strategic partner. Um, we have to, um, look at all the different possibilities on how we can, um, partner with surrounding communities. We have said from day one that this is something that Harlem Township cannot do on their own. Uh, the township itself has very limited, um, powers. Um, so we have, you know, started the process of of who, um, may be potential partners, um, for the township. Um, so as we've looked at different areas, um, and, uh, discussed the pros and cons of the different, um, communities that surround. Um, the township, um, the strategic planning committee has decided that. It's our intent, uh, to now focus on the city of Westerville as a strategic partner. And, uh, we plan to continue to work on this, um, in the near future. And, uh, so that's where we are tonight is to let you know that we've identified that as. Where we want to focus our efforts.
Another thing I will say that I know the strategic planning committee took an active role in trying to assist with the. Electrical transmission lines. They've been working with Delco Water. Uh, so there it's not just that. I mean. Those are two major things that I know the the residents were concerned about and. We like to claim a little bit that we at least got them to straighten some of the lines. They didn't do the best, but we we took what we we took. We took that little change as a partial victory if nothing. So is there any questions for Holly and the strategic planning? Yes, Bob.
I'd like this put into the record if I could. Will you, as the current members of the Harlem Township Trustee Board? Conduct a public meeting and will you, as trustees, answer questions regarding the potential merger? Of Harlem Township with the city of Westerville prior to voting whether to place the issue on the ballot?
Yes, we would.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
And I.
I I guess I have to even ask why that would be a question, sir.
Thank you, Paul.
I've asked on numerous stages. Well, I asked at the strategic planning committee as far as. Partnerships, and you can read starting, or watch it, starting minute forty-five. And I will say this, there were four members, only one member spoke, so I I give credit to the other three members for not doing misleading things. I also would encourage you to look at the, I watched the BZA meeting on, uh. Monday night because they did hold it. Um. And there was a question asked as far as strategic planning, and there was a rumor about talks about Westerville. And they would totally. Basically. Put aside. And so. This is something. That I think the township needs to know. And it has been done, in my opinion. In a behind-the-scenes way.
Well, thank you for your input, Bob. We'll look into.
Question for Holly?
Yes.
Um. How soon do you think we might have a? A more clear idea of the. Configuration or reconfiguration of township. Facilities, so the maintenance building, the use of the old concrete plant. Status of the park, expansion of firehouse, this this. This part of the township here.
So I I have been working through some draft drawings, um, just of how this whole area could lay out. Um, I haven't even really brought those to the strategic planning committee. I went to. To, uh, work through it with the architect I'm working on before I bring it, but I would say. Relatively soon I could have something along those lines as far as how this central village. Um, could look, but it would be from a very high level. I'm talking high level, just to show that it how connections can be made. Um, the the trustees and would have to go to another level to do any kind of feasibility or. Um, anything along those lines. What what we're doing is very, very high.
Thank you.
Another question. Oh, the talks with partnering with Westerville. That would not be an annexation. It would be some other kind of relationship, right?
There are many different types of partnerships that we can explore, and we're exploring everything that is available to us. Um, we don't want to leave anything unturned.
That was not it. But I was going to say, I think.
Not annexation. It would not be annexation.
I think that's, I think that was Johnny's question, correct? Uh, no, that's.
That's that's an extreme kind of partnership in life.
It would never go willingly. We would never go willingly to that.
For annexation, uh, you do, and the proper units have to agree for annexation.
What what would a merger? Would that be, how would that be advantageous to the township?
The 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 only thing, the only thing I've read. Is the difference between a merger and an annexation. A merger is a negotiated item. An annexation is basically a negotiated item between that property owner and that entity. There's no township involvement as far as we want it, we don't. Merger or something like that, if that was to be be recommended, would be a vote to the public, and annexation is not.
Might be a better question for Jim or Mike. Was there any budget proposal submitted, or you guys need? More budget in the strategic planning committee for what you guys are doing? Are you going to talk about that later, or is there anything else that? Was.
Yeah, I misunderstood. We have a small budget of two thousand dollars. For supplies and that type of stuff and and plans. And I thought it was on anniversary. And, uh. I'm bad. Somebody, I thought, we thought it was anniversary and it's not. It's. And should be at first of the year. So we we do have, and we are requesting an attenuation of that two thousand. We didn't even come close to it last year.
Okay.
You know.
If you were going to move some of that money, if they if they need.
Yeah, she put two thousand dollars or we, I think we spent four hundred and fifty or five hundred dollars. Out of that two thousand. So, you know, mostly it's just for supplies and and printing. But yeah, thank you for bringing that up. Yeah.
I have office supplies of twenty-five hundred. Is that enough or you?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
For strategic, yeah.
Oh.
So just to make it clear, Holly, we, the 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 strategic planning committee is just. Identifying the city of Westerville as a potential strategic partner.
Correct.
Okay. There's no. No, no comment as what's going to be done. Okay. Anything else? Nope. All right. Thank you. Thank you. All right. Trustee comments, uh, motion to approve contract with. Bruceus Johnson and Griggs LLC Attorneys for Strategic Planning. That's the name of the firm?
Where they should have.
What is, okay. I was thinking something. So I'd entertain a motion if somebody would like to read that into the, write some motions.
Oh, uh, so moved. You mean, you mean read it, read it, please. I may have to approve the contract of Bruceus Johnson and Griggs LLC for strategic planning. The compensation for such counsel during two thousand twenty-four shall be paid as follows. Two hundred and twenty-five dollars per hour. Partner attorney time, two hundred and five dollars per hour, senior associate time, hundred and eighty dollars an hour. Associate time, hundred twenty dollars per hour, law clerk time, and a hundred and five dollar per legal assistant time. Plus out-of-pocket expense reimbursements, provided that the total compensation shall not exceed twenty-five thousand dollars. Without further action by this board.
All the motion, do I have a second?
Oh, second.
Motion second, all in favor, I.
All right.
Post same sign. The motion to redact Resolution twenty-four dash zero one one seventeen dash zero one product five. Is the approval for hiring of Tommy Smith as maintenance supervisor. Uh, I'll make a motion. To redact the hiring, hiring of Tommy Smith as full-time maintenance supervisor on a six-month probation period, starting salary of sixty-eight thousand per year, twenty-six pays. Of two thousand six fifteen point three eight plus benefits. Effective starting date was to be too, well, due to decline of offer. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion is second, all in favor, I.
All right.
I'll post same sign. Maybe you want that one.
Yeah, uh, Mr. Chairman. Uh, Otis and I added some roadwork, so they came up with a revised estimate. Which is, uh, thirty-one, thirty-four thousand one hundred dollars more. To, uh, chip seal the, uh, streets in the village. Crack seal, green. Crack seal, Green Cook Road from Center Village to Trenton. So that comes to a total amount of 279,700. And I've put on here tagged it, Ivy Ridge not to be paved until the mastic material is put on by J and A Construction. We have yet to get that estimate. So I will make a motion that we approve the additional roadwork items added to the twenty-four road improvement program through Delaware County Engineers Office at the estimated increase in price of the project of 34,100. That takes it from 245,600 to 279,700.
I have a motion, I have a second.
Second.
In favor, I.
I.
I'll post same sign. Hey, we discussed budget planning. Matt, you had a.
Yeah, I would like to introduce Amanda Reese. Went to the Ohio Township Association Annual Conference, and she was one of the people that was in the vendors, but then you've also presented in individual workshops as well.
Not specifically at Ohio Township Association, at other conferences.
But I was real impressed with what she had, some ideas of how to help out the township. So I just wanted to present it to the board and have her explain it better than I could to see if she would, you can provide.
And if I could just hand out some brief information to each of you, if that's all right, gentlemen? First of all, thank you for having me tonight. Again, my name is Amanda Reese. I'm from Clemens Nelson and Associates. We are an HR and management consulting firm. Our firm, our corporate office is in Columbus. Our office is in Easton. We have also have offices in the Cleveland area, up in Akron. We also have a Northwest Ohio office in Lima as well as a Cincinnati office as well. So we're able to cover the whole state of Ohio. We also do some work in the neighboring states as well. We assist public employers. We do minimal work in the private sector. However, our focus is the public sector. We're basically someone that you can call when something arises HR-wise. We represent, and I don't have a specific number on this, but it's ballpark about ninety townships within the state. And we also have a variety of other public sector employee employers as well that we represent. We only represent employers. We do not represent employees in any issues that they have against their employers. Primarily what we do is we offer a retainer program to our clients where that basically gives our clients the opportunity to have us pretty much whenever they need us. Every client has an account manager and they, every client has the cell phone number of their account manager so they can call their account manager at any time if any issues arise or if they have any questions. We help a lot of smaller employers because they don't necessarily have an HR department and HR questions come up. We also help larger employers who do have HR departments where they just need some additional assistance if they're overworked or if other things come up and things along those lines. We provide a lot of training to employers. We're able to give leadership training to the higher-ups, but we can also give training to all employees as well. We do compliance, we do required compliance training such as discriminatory harassment, sexual harassment, things along those lines. But we also do trainings for to help if anyone would benefit from supervisory training and things like that. Supervisory training, leadership training, how to be a great leader, things like that, communication training and everything along those lines. We really tailor our trainings to what our clients need. We also provide services such as employee relations audits where what we do in those situations is oftentimes when we first start working with an entity, we would suggest an employee relations audit. During that, we would talk with, we could talk with all employees or just a snippet of employees, just to kind of hear what's going on in the, in this place of employment. What do employees like? Where would they like to see improvement and things like that? So we can then report back to leadership that this is what we learned. And when we talk to employees, and we're not taking down names as to who said what or anything like that, just so everyone can feel more comfortable talking with us and we can just give the broad picture to the employer. We also offer onsite services if anyone needs anything like that where we could come in and essentially be an HR employee once a month, once a week. However, often someone would need it, where we could go in, take a look at your personnel files, make sure the right things are in them, make sure that anything that's not supposed to be in them is not in them, things along those lines. We do a variety of different things. We also do compensation studies. A lot of people are concerned about questions over, are we paying our employees the right amount for things? Or we're thinking of bringing on a new employee and creating a new position. How much should we pay that employee? How much should we be paying our current employees? Or how much should we pay someone to get a promotion, things like that? So we can do compensation studies and give advice on that as well. We do a variety of HR things. We work on job descriptions, policy manuals, employee handbooks, all kinds of things along those lines. And also what we do is when we start working with a new employer, we really just sit down and talk and figure out what what can we do to help you? Because everyone has their own issues and we want to be able to tailor what you need. So we definitely would want to sit down and talk with you. I've provided each of you with our public sector service booklet that just provides some general information. It's very overview as to what kind of services we offer. And then also there is information in there regarding employee relations audits, just so you can kind of see ballpark pricing, what those things would be, if you would be interested in either of those. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have about specific things or broad things. I'm here and happy to answer questions if anyone has questions.
Any questions right now?
Not right now.
All right. Have to read this through and.
Oh, sure.
I'll have some questions once I read it through. Maddie.
No, no, I appreciate it. Thanks for explaining what you're doing.
Thank you very much.
Oh, it's no problem at all. And if you have any questions, if you would like to reach out to me individually, my phone number is on there as well. If you have any questions, please feel free to reach out. Or if you'd like me to come back to another meeting, I'd be more than happy to do so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Sure. Cemetery is Mr. Yaz.
Cemetery, we just had one burial for the last meeting. The other thing I wanted to double check, I think in the meeting before the new year, we had talked about getting boards for help Jake dig.
Know what it is. I'll take care of it soon. Someone gives me the definite how many.
Otis, you just need to know exactly.
Yeah.
We had a conversation last week, which I haven't been able to get to you about ordering the, I know, we meet every morning over coffee. I saw the. About getting the boards. I, the reason I haven't got to you is I wanted to get specifics, which I hadn't got from you yet, on the thickness of the boards that you want because I know after four or five uses, the plywood breaks under the weight of the.
Three-quarter or one inch at least.
Yeah.
You know, a weather grade. Five.
How many sheets?
Well, I think it's Jake, Jake would know based on his equipment.
Or for the equipment to set on, too.
Yeah. I apologize if that got lost someplace. I was just. Say, need to go get it.
You know, it's, no, I remember I was in the office and I was like, there's so many to ask, but I couldn't remember.
I'm guessing probably six.
I'm.
The equipment would set on four.
Yeah.
To roll with.
We got it.
And if if we see that that isn't enough to get us, you know, through, then we will go.
Okay.
Two more.
All right, we'll get, we'll get it.
I think that would fall within that approval without, you know.
Yeah, that's what they said it's under. And the other thing I wanted to ask the board for would be to look at some of the fences around, especially the Fancher Road Cemetery. They're kind of getting rusty, leaning over, there's some shrubs growing in there. I was just going to look at getting some cost estimates, what we do, if it's easier just to paint them, to fix them, replace them. I don't know what, if you guys have any thoughts, I could talk to Jerry about that.
It would be interesting to see the price for all of the above.
Yeah.
So good.
Find out what it would cost to clean them. Are they repairable? If they're paintable, you know, what kind of life are we expecting out of them? If all those are bust, what would be the cost to replace? Agreed.
Right.
Okay. That, hopefully, for next meeting. Thank you.
Facilities, I have really nothing per se. I know the parks park committee is going to be bringing something, so the the park's going to be being discussed there shortly, so I won't steal that thunder. I'll let them bring that to the forward. So administrative offices.
I had given the board proposal from Buckeye Cloud a month ago, I believe, for your review on the cost of doing security cameras for here at this building. And I think maybe that one came in a couple months ago, and then last month I gave you the second half of your security camera installation quote, which was for over at the maintenance building. And I am looking for.
Question at the maintenance building. Is that one camera or is that, how many cameras are we talking at the maintenance building? Because I'd like to know, are we going to have anything on the parking lot and?
According to this, that's two cameras. That's, I know there's one on the fuel tanks. There's one on the I don't know, is that the salt bin? I don't know what that is. Out back of the, it looks like it's where they have like all the gravel and the salt and everything back there in the back. So it is, it is two cameras. He can put, he does have a quote on here to do one additional camera to get more coverage if you guys so choose, which would cover like the roadside. You know, like the aisle roadside.
Future expandability is there?
It it has future expandability, just like all the other for what we were doing here.
Okay, I wanted to, just wanted to verify.
The reason the cost on the second half of this quote for over the maintenance was so big is because he has to run a whole new like server installation because we can't do point-to-point or whatever to get access.
Right.
So.
So we have. Read that motion in.
I'm going to approve the proposal from Buckeye Cloud on the purchase of installation of security cameras, network cabinet, EMS door access control, video recorder and firewall at a cost of 11,468 dollars, cost share with the fire department. Second half of security camera installation at a cost of 6,800. Naming Kendra Bor on behalf of the trustees to facilitate this project.
Have a motion, have a second.
Second.
On favor, I.
I.
I'll put the same size. Kendra. Their laptop discussion.
Yep, up for discussion now would be the two laptops for the zoning department. Mike Cannon's laptop is the same age of the one that I had and that has recently failed. His is failing. It overheats. It has some other various issues. I have consulted with Carol at Buckeye Cloud. We had also discussed potentially getting a laptop for the zoning consultant in order to make sure that the setup of these laptops are what we would need for zoning programs and zoning use. We got information from Delaware County regional planning. We got information from a couple other zoning departments in different municipalities as to what they use. I took the information that came from them, gave that to Carol. It was exactly the exact identical system that Carol came up with. So Carol priced it out to get an HP. It's broke down here. It's 1542 plus a dock at 160. That's 1702. You add a monitor, mouse, keyboard, you're at 193599. Same as with Dell. All the same type thing. Cost was 196499. Buckeye Cloud has a contract with a company called Carbon System, and he can get it for a reduced rate because of his contract with the laptop, the dock, the mouse and keyboard, all included. That is 1,600, and then we had 199 for the monitor for 1790. It's my recommendation to go with the Carbon System laptop. It's a 14-inch Windows 11 Professional, 13th generation, and I'll wrap it away. I five, one, three, five, zero, zero, H. Laptop with the dock, the mouse, the keyboard. It comes with a three-year warranty through Carbon Systems. They are not remanufactured. These are brand-new laptops. So it would be the 1799 each for each laptop.
You need two of them?
We need two of them. Yes.
We did. Yes, you so agree.
I'm, I move to approve purchase of Mike Cannon's replaced his failing laptop with Quest, with township laptop in for the zoning consultant for, you're recommending the Carbon System one?
Yeah, that's what's in the motion.
Carbon System computer and monitor for a total of 1,799.
Motion, I have a second.
That was each, correct?
That's each.
Okay, I'll take it, Dave.
I have a motion is second in favor, I.
I.
I'll post some.
Okay, just wanted to update the board on the office conversion. I talked to the contractor today. He is stating it will not be completed at the beginning of next week like we originally thought. He is saying between March 1st and March 4th. I have reached out to Wright Run because that puts us in our one week notification window that they asked for, so they can come in and do the flooring. So about the time he's wrapping up around the first to the fourth, they'll be in here around that same time to put the flooring in. So it should be completed no later than March 4th. Point and pay. I've been in contact with them. Our credit card payment system is now in their implementation manager's hands. They are working on the finalization of getting our credit card payment system set up. They said, I would know more next week.
Lisa, I apologize. I told you I thought with that your office would be done in the middle of February. I should know better knowing contractors that I've lived with for forty-plus years that are never on time.
But that's all right.
So we're looking at the first couple of weeks of March.
Wow, I bought a Home Depot had like a outside mail, secure mailbox, and it looks like it's going to be big enough. I got to open it up first. But it looks like it's going to be big enough for people to shove checks and legal and letter, paperwork, everything on the outside.
Cut a hole in the door at least to.
So.
Put a bag on the inside to catch them. I apologize for that.
No problem.
All righty, maintenance roads and parks.
Well, we discussed the changing the roadwork we're doing. The only other thing is, I think of offhand, remote for the shop door. Do you want me to contact Carter? Matt?
That was, that fell off the iceberg.
I I can call him. I need to call him for Moon.
Okay, yeah.
So I can do that. All righty. Thank you. That's it.
Dave or who's, who wants to go?
Ed Valeska, member of the park planning committee. Last evening, there was a meeting involving trustee Richardson, chairman Dave Snyder, myself, and representatives from two youth baseball organizations who would like to schedule use of our ball net this summer. They'd like to start scheduling for March. So we realize the trustees would need to discuss this and decide on the appropriateness of it.
I did meet with them last night, and I would recommend to the board that we approve the use of our ball diamonds. Another thing came up, unless you were going to bring up about the the building that they want to potentially, they want to build a potential ten-by- Uh, another thing came up unless you were going to bring up about the, the, the building that they want to potentially, they want to build a potential ten by ten shed over there. To store their equipment. They're talking about purchasing a tractor. And drag to, to drag the field. They're also talking about a product and I can't.
Turfus?
Turfus. Uh, I looked at the MSDS sheet. It has a health rate, a standard of one, which so does dust and flour. And everything else. It's a respiratory potential. Uh, irritant if to some folks, like I said, uh. You know, I, I personally, I can walk through the kitchen if my wife's baking and the flour will set me off. So you know, it's, it's no, no worse than that. Uh, I would recommend that we. Through our guidance and our. One of us, and if you would like for it to be moved, make sure that everything goes through me that we're the placement. We'll talk about placement if we do approve the, 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 the small shed. To store their equipment. Like I said, the tractor, the drag. I personally see no negatives in this. They were made aware that they would be able to use the park as we have in the past Monday through Thursday. Uh, with an occasional Saturday, but they would have to reserve that ahead.
Okay.
Uh, and that uh, residents take. President, presidents over the field.
They're aware of our usual insurance requirement?
The insurance requirements, my understanding, or one of them at least is on file already.
Well, depending on who the second team is you're talking about, I know for fact the ones.
The Sharks and Big Walnut.
Big Walnut Baseball and Softball Association.
I've got insurance on both of them.
Okay, good.
So they've already. Uh, yeah.
Who would be financially liable if something were to be. From their shed or anything like that?
That, that was one of the first things I said to them last night was that they would assume all liability on the shed and. That the township would be held not, non-responsible, non-liable. Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, you know how many of the. People playing on these teams are actual residents of Harlem Township?
On the one team, the Columbus Sharks, I know. All the coaches. And I know at least three boys on that team are Harlem Township residents as far as the rest of them.
Unfortunately, no matter how hard I've tried, I can't force parents to put their kids on Little League baseball. If I ever figure out how to do that, you can ask my son who's sitting right there. I tried to force him and it didn't even work. So.
Are they, are, is there a charge for the um, field rentals?
Only charge is they do all the maintenance and upkeep on them. The only thing they don't do is cut the grass, which are. Our folks already cut the grass. Any amenities or any improvements they do to the field. Stays with the, they, they've talked about maybe building, cause I think Johnny, you probably remember the time when we were having the HTH meeting and. Flyballs were bouncing into the shelter house. They've talked about potentially adding there. I don't know if that's going to come to bear. Some sort of thing over the backstop that doesn't have. You probably can't believe or over the batting. But there again, they are also, their insurance is liable for anything like that. But no, we don't charge.
My official position is there's nothing more American than. Kids playing baseball in the township park.
Absolutely. Yep. Yes.
Um. Yeah, we, we've had things over there when they've been practicing. Well, they tend not to show up until evening. So would the field still be available to locals?
Through the day?
Yeah.
Oh, that's great. And the only, what we, what we're going to do, Kendra and I was, is once they get, we get to their schedule. Is we're going to print a calendar out and we'll have it up on the bulletin board over at the park that these are teams so-and-so because that. That has always been my concern is one of the teams show up or and. Somebody else is on the dock. They can say, wait a minute, you know, I've got a quote unquote reserved tonight and hopefully the person honors it. If not, we call the sheriff.
They reserve the shelter house at the same time or just the field?
Just the field.
And they're no longer trying to put up additional fencing?
That is going to be a definite hard no. Uh, I know I saw an email talking about temporary fencing where they put it up and take it down. If they do something like that, we might be okay with that, but. As it stands right now, the, this board had said. An absolute hard no to the fencing. In the past.
Just off the top of your head, do you have an idea? You said it's only a ten by ten shed and a thing for their equipment stuff. Do you have an idea of what it is?
I told him it needs to look like a barn.
It's gonna be someplace near the, the barn.
We want to try to put it close, but that's going to be an issue. I had suggested, you know. Next to the shelter house, Dave brought up a valid point and I've forgotten. I appreciate that. It would put the wellhead right or the pumphead right in the middle of the barn. So that probably won't work. Uh, I think between the conversations, Ed and Dave and, and the rest of the park committee and myself will find a place that's. The least intrusive. That is if this board even approves that shed, which we don't know yet.
Okay, yeah. Yeah, cause there's a bunch of electric over there too that we.
That I know where that's at. On that side, actually on that side, there's not a lot. Well, I guess coming from the, there's a little. They're not going to be digging that deep. They're not putting a footer in. I mean, this is going to be a, this is going to be a mobile shed. It, they, they may, they may put a gravel pad down to set it. That'd be the most I could see. So.
There's a motion on the.
Uh, well, there hasn't been yet. I would entertain a motion or I'll make a motion. I make a motion that the board. Approves two things. One, the usage of the field again this year by the two teams and that. The, the, this board would approve the. Installation of a ten by ten. Storage facility, shed at their cost, at their personal responsibility, at their liability.
Uh, site approval.
Site approval. Of the trustees. And if you want to name me as the person to do that, that's fine. I would not make that decision until I call both of you. I know that.
Well, I'll second that motion. It's Carl on the oversight.
I have a motion in a second. Call in favor. Uh, I'll post same.
Thank you very much.
Tell them this play ball.
Good discussion. Thank you.
All right, Dave. Anything else?
Yes, I have a. Couple of updates for, for you. Uh, I attended the, the second meeting of the semi-quintcentennial. America two fifty celebration uh, for Delaware County and uh, they're. Really putting the pedal to the metal here to get people in gear and start organizing. They, they want to move forward with planning on this throughout Delaware County fairly quickly here in the summer. They want plans. In place where they can start looking at the funding needs pretty quickly on this. It's a little bit ambiguous at this point. But it's going to become clear in the next couple of months. And it'd be a really good idea, I think, for us to get ahead of the, the curve here with planning and, and really get some, some good ideas together and, and see what. Really the, the sense of the community is, the kind of things that we could do for, for this celebration. Um, I, I think it's, it's really. Uh, be. Something that could help a lot with the, just. Uh, a, a spirit of, of community here that, that we want to, we want to keep that, that flame alive. So one of the things that's proposed is they want to emphasize um, commemorating Revolutionary War veterans. We've already done that. Vicki's work is monumental in this, this area. And we're going to be telling people this is a good way to proceed and showing them what path works really well. Um. But I think there's other things that, that we can do as well. Uh, in particular, we're talking about things like, uh, we have visitors coming to the cemeteries. Let's work real hard like with theatrical groups, have reenactors that can tell stories of these Revolutionary War veterans. Well. Richard Thompson, Vicki's already done that. So we're again, we're well ahead of this, but this is what's. Coming down the road at us and um. We're really well positioned to take full advantage of things here. Uh, I'd like, like to. Anything that I can do to help them, you know, get information in your hands, uh, assist with any way I can, uh, let me know. I'm, I'm happy to work on that. Uh, the second thing, um, closer to park planning committee is, uh, we've drafted the, a gratification for. A small wildflower flower uh, garden. Um. Then it's going to form like a collar, a horseshoe around. The light pole area. And just brighten up a little bit the welcoming openness. Come and see us sort of. Picture for our, our park. Um, there are people coming down six oh five, going up six oh five. They, they're going to see, I think, a, a little bit more color there. And it's going to make it stand out just a little bit more. That's the, the impact of this. If we get this grant, um. If, if there's going to be a small amount of money basically required for the. Uh, real, before we get to the reimbursement part of it and uh, my understanding is that we asked for that as part of one of the light items for. Gardens and planting and landscaping around the new playground. So that's where I see that. Small fund of money, small amount of money coming from. We're going to be submitting the grant next week. It's due by March fourth. And um. Let me know if you have any questions about this.
The only question I have, how I saw your email, uh, maintenance of that. I'm, you know, I, I put flower gardens in and, and all of a sudden they look, they're great weed gardens. Uh, so who's going to be maintaining this flower garden?
I, I have, um. Included and, and they know this, the, the garden club and Harlem Township Heritage. As well as the park planning committee on this. Uh, yes, there, there is maintenance though. I think this is going to be quite a, a, a little bit like the, the school award over there. Uh, it's intentionally small. If it's going to be, uh. Constructed in a, in a way that it's going to be relatively easy to, uh. Pull weeds out of new soil, this kind of thing. It's going to be relatively easy to maintain. We're, we're looking at that and there could be some additional planting every year, but we're going to quickly get to the point in the next two, three years where. The plants that are there are, are going to, they are at the school award, are going to be there year in, year out for a fairly long period of time. So we, we thought about this maintenance. We've scaled it, we designed it in ways that hopefully. Minimize that and we, we have a fairly large group of people that are interested in this. I'm hoping this, this all come together.
Yeah, cause that, that would be my biggest concern. You know, it, unlike the school memorial, which is back a little bit, that's at our front door. Where you're talking about, that's, that's the front door of our park. And that would be very visible from six oh five if it starts looking like one of my flower beds. Anything else?
That's all that.
Appreciate it, sir. All right, uh. Chief.
Uh, just a quick update. We've had ninety-six runs so far this year, um, fifty-seven percent EMS and forty-three percent fire. We maintain this. We'll have another ten to fifteen percent jump over what we did last year. And I don't see a reason why we won't. We had, uh, well, we had six or seven yesterday. Yeah.
Yeah. So, right. Okay. Guys, do it. Your guys do an excellent job. I can attest to that. Uh, zoning department.
Yeah, just want to give you a quick update. Uh, right now we're staying about the same situation where last year on thermals we got six. I've got uh, two in process right now. As far as nuisance property, we've got two that are still waiting their day in court up with Corey. Um. One on six oh five and the other one over on, on Harlem Road. Got five that are in process right now. I'm giving a chance to get cleaned up before we take it to the next step. Got three baited out uh, around the township. We've got three new ones. We're in the process of. I got the letters heading out to them today about some issues we had that were concerns from residents that brought it to me. Uh, we still have the one property that uh, is a big concern for the township. Uh, it still has no owner, still in probate. I can still do nothing about it. Uh, which I'd like to talk with Sheriff Blazer after this about some of those issues if I had a chance to. And then if he's not gone before it gets done. And then I have, um. Uh, I did have one resident concerned that, that came in. Uh, it's out of the Westerville Estates down there. And surprisingly enough, it was two properties that had issues with, with pretty bad on trash. And when I went out there and stopped down, got pictures and. Got back to the building, um, left my car on the door. By the time I got those letters out the next day, the guy that put out the concern called me and said that the people saw me come by, take their pictures and they cleaned it all up. So. That's my spot.
So the camera. Wow. Yes.
But yeah, but uh, we've also got to do BZA issues that are probably going to make their way to BZA, uh, followed up on, given I don't actually followed up on those the other day and um. That's about it.
Is that it, sir?
That's it.
Zoning. Johnny?
Um, we're working on revising parts of articles seven and eight, which are the two that could use more often in this county. Um, and working on revising some of the definitions in the code. Bring them more in line with what's in the ORC.
BZA. Do you have any sense from BZA?
No, I'm just, uh, had, uh. Most people were being pretty cooperative for change. And coming in and uh, doing what, what needs to be done when they're reminded. And uh, so yeah, it's, it's been going real well.
All right, that being said, anything public, we'll open it up to the public. Anything from the public, public? Yes, sir.
My name is Larry Emmert and I live down here on Hatch Road and I've been concerned about this roundabout down here. When it's going to start happening and what you're going to do into my road when you start weaving out in that trap.
You talking about on six oh five?
Six oh five and Fancher Road.
He lives on Hatch.
He lives on Hatch.
I live on Hatch.
Right.
And that, and every time somebody, it happens when you're wrecked on. Fancher on six oh five and Fancher, they run down my road and it's a township road. And it's not milk or a lot of traffic. Half of it is chip and seal and half of it is blacktop.
Right.
And they, and the speed limit is forty miles an hour, which is too darn fast for that road. Cause it has complete turning, ninety-degree turn and halfway up. And uh, I'm concerned about it. I don't want all that traffic on my road when they start shutting down this road here and all that traffic from. Johnstown comes down and they say, well, we can go around Hatch Road here and right back over. Well, I don't want that. Same way comes down six oh five. They would just run down Hatch and swing over.
I've uh, spoke with Delaware County. And they're supposed to uh, talk to ODOT and get back to us. That's uh, we, we, well, we've got a meeting with them March fifth. So I'm hoping they'll bring some answers. Uh, our biggest concern is trucks, of course. That's a, that's going to be a real problem.
Did you tell laps they'd talk aloud? You're not even talking with your hand up and playing. I can't understand them.
Well, I said, we're, we got, we got a meeting with. ODOT. And Delaware County next month. We're going to discuss this, but there's no promises anything we can do. We can't close the road. Can't say no through traffic or anything like that. We're hoping we can at least regulate the trucks.
I want you to regulate the traffic because I don't want a hundred. Uh, sir.
I know.
I've lived on this place fifty-some years.
I know.
I've run my grandkids from Hatch Road up to the Sunbury and get from here to thirty-seven, there was a hundred goddamn cars coming down that road in the morning.
Yeah.
I, I pass in. They're, they're coming down and I'm going up. Around eight o'clock in the morning. So, so you know what's going to happen. They're going to start running around on that there. You're going to put all that traffic on these township roads.
No, we're not happy about it either.
Well, you ought to have something to say about your township.
Well.
We, we, we.
You don't know anything about the county at all.
I thought the township had maintenance scheduled for like two months.
Yeah.
We can't shut roads down.
No.
They shut the road down, sir.
No, I was, I was. I know, but I'm just saying. To answer that joke. I know, but I'm just saying, to answer that joke, we can't shut roads down.
I just don't want all that traffic on that route of mine.
Unfortunately, we're, I, 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 I will agree with you a hundred percent, sir, but unfortunately, we are very limited in our powers. As far as what we can do to stop or change the flow of traffic.
The only thing I know to do is get some coke patch and start putting me a speed bump down that darn road. And I'll put some heavy one, you know, I won't put them little lights in there. I'll put, put on. I got money to do it with. And didn't they write, put all of that traffic on these little township roads? So there, I'll tell you, the last big wreck you had down there. There are three hundred and some cars on that road in an hour.
Uh, we've, we've tried, you know, I, the, the roundabout is probably not the best solution to the. The accident issues, but it's probably gonna make it this, about as safe as the. County and the state are willing to do. Yes, sir.
Why?
Or may I answer?
Why can't we have a simple light that works in any other four-way area? I mean, it's sort of a roundabout and all the silver crap is better called.
We're not. Because we have no control over what the state does. Six oh five is a state highway. We, we have, we have sent multiple letters. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. No, you're fine. Right, go, run it.
You're gonna put all that high, state highway traffic on your dark township road.
We're not, sir.
No.
Oh, yes, you are. You're gonna let them do it.
We can't stop that. How do we, sir, now, in all reality, sir, please, this, this, how do we stop that?
When you tell them you don't want all that.
Okay, we also.
Put them over on them county roads, like over down, down there on Harlem Road or up here on, uh, county road up here.
The, the county will specify a, just like they've done in the past, they'll specify a detour. And they're, they're supposed, but that doesn't matter. Johnny, you know as well as I do. They can specify, exactly, and I could.
I'm only talking about trucks, but you're not talking about all the cars.
We can't control the cars either.
Control them.
How do we control the cars?
They know the road. If they know the road, they come this there every day. They know how to go around.
Absolutely.
Every time there's a wreck down there every two weeks. At that Fancher Road, they know where to run at, they go right around.
And it's our vote. And I. I.
Too, I, I use your road.
As Larry said, when these cars come down, they fly. I like to walk our road or I ride my three-wheel bike because I am, don't have my balance. And when those cars come down, I will always pull over to the side, hey, lie by. I have been injured on my legs from kicking stones and what have you. They don't care less who's on that road. That kind of thing has got to stop. Cuz sure, we have no children right now, but grandchildren do come over to visit. And that is a dangerous problem that someone has to address.
My main danger, I want.
And, and, and sir, I totally, I totally respect what you're saying. I'm just trying to get the point across to you. We, as a township, are very limited in what kind of control we have. We try, we, we have set, I mean, the stoplight, we requested a stoplight for years. At that intersection and six oh five, or I'm sorry, at Center Village. Thankfully, we finally got a four-way stop there. That, you know, we, we, but the, the county and the state control, the state controls that road. And unfortunately, when they build this roundabout, in the end, it's hopefully going to alleviate the accident problem. We hope. I, I, I don't.
How long will it take?
They're discussing about lowering the speed limit there before the roundabout.
I doubt it.
You can't go around it in fifty miles an hour.
It's gonna be a natural slowdown.
Yeah, right.
It's gonna slow down the.
I mean, you know, my roundabout proponent, no. I think roundabouts are a waste of money.
And time.
And time. I think stoplights are a lot simpler. You wanna know who you talk to about that? Your county commissioners. Those are the guys that control that.
Can't you guys kind of, you know, get all together and.
I consent, with this board, this board has sent letters, after letters, after letters, representing Harlem Township. The residents of Harlem Township have requested. I would venture to say the gentleman sitting back there has probably seen letters from us requesting things. The sheriff's department, at, at least they'll come out and, and, and they'll, they'll set. A cruiser there for a few days to monitor speed. They can't be out there twenty-four seven.
They won't stop it. They just, they just go, go ahead. I know what you're gonna do. They're gonna go, right, go ahead, turn right there on that road. And they, there's a foot there for them to sit. They've sat there so many times, but.
I, I, I wish we had, I, I, as a, as a township. Our legal powers are so limited.
That's a shame.
It is, it is. And if you, if you, if you look what's recently, I mean, without getting on a bandwagon here, and I apologize. But if you, if you look at some current legislation, that some of the big builders are trying to get taken through the state of Ohio. They're trying to eliminate referendum powers and zoning powers of, of townships. They're, they're wanting to take what little bit of power we have away. Alls I can suggest, and I appreciate you coming here and I think you should come here, and I, I, I love the fact that I see people here. But we need to, as a township, we need to be writing letters to the people that are really in power.
Let me ask you this.
Yes, ma'am.
A number of accidents at that particular point.
Yes.
I mean, are you gonna wait till someone dies before they do something?
Actually, I believe that was in one of our letters.
Because, I mean, it's, it's amazing. I mean, you could count. Accidents up there, and they're pretty serious accidents.
Nobody cares until someone from their higher power family is involved. That's, that's this trustee's opinion.
And I think you're right, unfortunately.
I know, and I wish I could do something about it.
Can I say one other thing?
Yes, sir. It's your fault.
I've been down there for fifty years and I'm going down Fancher Road and sat there at that stop sign. And I've seen a person pull across that road in front of another car and just miss me. On Fancher Road going, going westbound. And I'm coming westbound and I'm sat there and I see a person pull out. And, uh, get hit right in front of me again and drive right over into that yard. Myself, you know what I mean?
I drive, I drive a rather large truck.
I have to anymore.
I drive a rather large truck and I pull a rather large camper. It's amazing how many people pull out in front of that thing. I, I know exactly what you're saying. Yes.
I was just asking the sheriff, cuz we live off of Harlem and they fly down our road and people are walking in, in riding bikes all the time too. And he was saying the township can maybe get, I wonder if it is just worth looking into those signs with the camera that flash the speed. To see, um, if it's worth.
I, I, you know, we, we can look at that, but I used to be a teenager. And when I saw those, I'd see how fast I could go.
It's, uh, something else if, uh.
It's, it's just a reminder. It's not necessarily the term.
Sure. We've got different options available. Certainly, there are some communities, townships, different communities that will purchase on a road. They'll purchase and pull one permanently out there. Uh, other options are if there's a particular road, a stretch of road that's an issue. And the difficult part is if they go down there when there's an accident or something like that, that's hard to plan. We can't really plan for that. But if there is a road that was, everybody believe there's high speeds all the time, then we've got some things we can put out there. Uh, stealth stat, it's things that you don't necessarily see it, so it's not flashing the speed. It'll record the speeds for us. That way we can look back over the course of a few days, determine whether or not this is out of bounds for that area.
I would like to see that, if we could have something like that put down on that, on those roads right around that area, because every time there is an accident on six oh five. It, it, the traffic gets detoured, which is, you know, they're gonna find a place. And if it, I, I, I don't live there and apologize for what I'm about to say, but I don't mind so much that they drive through there. I just want them to respect the neighbors. You know, drive, if it's forty-five, drive forty-five. I mean, just, you, you don't have to do the sixty-five we were doing. And if we could do that, that would be awesome, sir. How do we go about having that?
Again, it, it, to, to say we're gonna put it down there in case there's an accident. I've only got a couple of those for the whole county, so I can't dedicate one down there just for the times where there's an accident. It's more for a section of road or roadway in particular. That people believe and we've got, you know, multiple complaints and things about speed in general.
Could we look at doing something like that when they start shutting six oh five down for the access of the roundabout?
Possibly. If it's, and again, this is something we put out there for a few days. For some time.
But then maybe that way there, we would see that if that is generating, which I'm sure it's gonna generate an issue, it already does, then maybe. Patrol would do a little more, or I don't know, what would we do from that point?
Well, if, if we notice that it is, but we'd obviously report back to trustees, uh, on the speeds that we came up with in the report. And then we'd share it with the highway patrol too, cuz they're out there working the speeds too and our folks. Um, if it's an issue with trucks, you talked about that earlier, um, you know, overweight trucks and different things. Uh, and Alex probably knows who we're, I'm thinking of right now. I've had a deputy that that's his full-time job. And he, he loves to go out there for trucks and variable weight or speeding and things like that. Uh, but we just would have to have the statistics first. So when it comes, when this happens, construction, the roundabout. And I'm not gonna get on the issue of roundabout. Some people like them. I know they cause accidents, but my understanding is the reason they're so. All over the place in Delaware County, supposedly the accidents are less severe when they happen. That's my understanding. But, um, if, uh, if this happens and you've got a road. With a hatch road or whichever road, there, a lot of people go down there and you believe their exceedance speed limit. Email us, call us at the sheriff's office. We'll get it set up. Our community relations deputies come out, they set it up. We'll engage and see how that's going.
Is that, is it, is it better if that comes from this border, if it would come from the residents along that road?
Either, either. If it comes from both, that's even better, okay?
Another thing we really didn't bring up is, you know, we're gonna have traffic. Coming in both directions using our road. And again, if they're going over speed, I mean, God help us. But that's also gonna be the problem. People coming from six oh five and people coming from Fancher, you know, to get around that roundabout.
Now, we had, we had this issue when they had, uh, thirty-seven closed or. Uh, where, because Lewis Road, we had tanker trucks. Coming down Lewis Road. If you are familiar with Lewis Road, oh my. Yes, Johnny.
Talk to somebody about lowering the speed limit on Hatch. For that period while.
But I don't, they would adhere to that. You know, people don't care.
We can.
That's why, actually, what we were looking for, Duncan, mine.
We can, we can request a speed study, but then there again.
Didn't we just do one of those for Hatch?
I thought we just did Hatch.
About a year ago or so.
I thought we did Hatch at one point.
Did we?
I think so.
Yeah, that system's kinda broken. We. We submitted a request to Delaware County and they forwarded to the highway patrol, and that's how the speed study gets done. And we don't always agree with their findings. You know, as you know, forty-five on Hatch is.
Forty.
Okay, well, forty, even that's too fast.
It's too fast.
That, that's, that's pretty unusual though, because there are very few township roads in Delaware County that are forty miles per hour. I'm just letting you know. I'm not saying that if I were a resident, then it'd probably bother me too. I'm just saying it's unusual to have a township road that's that much lower than that.
But first of all, Hatch is a very unusual zone. We have no sidewalks. So if you're gonna walk or ride a bike or anyone else, you're on the road.
Right.
Um. But what is wrong with, you know, having a speed bump? I don't think a lot, but just enough to slow them down, just enough that they're not speeding on that road in both directions.
I don't know.
We can look into it.
We can look into.
Both sets.
I don't know why I, I've never, that's never even been a question. I'll have to, we can look into that. It's a good question. I, I don't understand why we can't do speed bumps.
I mean, that, that would help an awful lot.
So, just aside with the sheriff a little bit, when there, when there's crashes out there, I, I just left fifteen years with the sheriff's office.
Okay.
Um, when there's crashes out there, generally, we can't go, we're, we're for speeds in those areas because. We're tied up with those crashes.
Oh, sure.
And those people know that. Those people know, oh, there's three cops there, there ain't another cop out here working traffic. Because if he was another cop out here, he'd be down there helping those guys down there. So those people know that and they take advantage of it.
Okay, the only thing is, like, like I keep saying, our role is still very unique cuz everyone knows, okay, there's the accident. You can go around it. They all know that roundabout.
Right, but unfortunately, like, it's, I, I live on Needles. And we dealt with the same problem when thirty-seven was cleared. The amount of traffic that went down our road and there were Needles Road, it's that quarter mile stretch from flat, straight and perfect. It's lying down our road all year round, but when that happened, it was even more. So I, I, I sympathize with it. I get it. But I guess it's still a public road and that's what, when we complained, that's what we were told, still a public road.
Share with you this form, um, that I just. Um, we can be allowed to submit to get a traffic study, to get us, to try to get into a speed bump or a traffic.
Okay, yeah, speed bump, I'd say, check the county engineer, they can kind of take the process of that, as far as the speed study. Thanks for letting us, it's on our website.
I, I, I can tell you, I, I know for a fact that. Nobody knows where it came from, but there was a no-through-traffic sign put up on actually Needles Road. And you know what happened to it? Guy pulled up in front of it and moved it out of his way.
You know, that doesn't surprise me.
Yeah, so, you know, even if, even if you do, even if the road did, I mean, they're, they're gonna do it. They, you know, we, we have to. We'll look into this. We'll, we'll find out about the speed bump.
Because the additional.
Do me a favor, once they go in, don't come in here and complain cuz we took the bottom of your car out either.
Well, we have this very difficult curve right now in one forty.
Yes.
And quite a few cars have wiped out. And. It's, it's really kind of ugly because it just goes that way. Even though we have arrows, you know, again. So that, that's, that's another problem with, with that. Well, we have a lot of, you know, challenges, uh, for something like this. What even dark, dark? Oh, well, that's you too.
Johnny, Johnny, rephrase that.
We don't have lights.
There's no lights, no? But, but now, let me ask you, if we worked on something about putting lights down there, how soon would the complaints come in about? You know, I mean, it's one of those, you're, if you do. Alright, if we're gonna move on and. The only thing, the only thing else I have to bring up is, uh, we, and I don't know, I, I guess. There was a complaint about over the snow or, or snow and the, the road over in Keller Pines and.
Yeah, that's what I would take care of, others took care of today.
Uh, but I would like to make a suggestion to the board. That we send a letter to the residents down there explaining to them that there is a berm on the side of the road. That if it gets damaged due to snow plows, it's not the township's responsibility. Like it would be any other road in this township. If we, we'll, we'll have to work on the wording, but I guarantee you that.
That's, that's a.
There's a dozen, probably residents right now that could call and say the dirt got tur, tore up by a snowplow.
Well, we've got people down there, it's got all kinds of things along the road where it's grass, stone, bricks, what have you. So, but the one individual, lady come out when Odie finished up and thanked him for taking care of it, so everything's good.
I just think we might wanna work on that.
Okay.
I have nothing else. Anybody else on the board?
Yeah, I'd like to request the executive session to discuss an employment issue.
Alright, I have a request for the executive session. We're gonna start doing executive sessions a little different. In the past, we've always, we're going to leave. If y'all wanna stay. We'll, we'll, we're gonna, we're gonna pause Zoom, but if y'all wanna stay in a room and we come back out, reconvene, you'll be here. If not, thank you for coming.
I just wanna thank you. I think you presented very well. Thank you, Dave.
Yep.
You're gonna have to tell me about a minus two handicap sometime.
Minus two handicap, oh.
Come out, come out, hang out.
We're gonna go ahead and. We're gonna go ahead and reconvene the meeting. I guess it's proper terminology, reconvene.
Alright, we're back on.
Yes, we're back on.
Okay. Mr. Chairman. I would move that we offer. Jason Andrew's, uh.
Yeah.
Employment. At the rate of, uh, we're doing sixty eight?
Yeah, it was sixty eight thousand.
Sixty eight thousand. Which I think the actual numbers, what'd we say, sixty eight thousand, sixteen dollars, or something like that? Additional employment with a, uh. Six month probationary period. With benefits. Am I missing something?
That's a start date, um.
Well, we don't, you're gonna start him on a, one of the pay.
If we give him, to give two week notice that he's current employer.
Right.
Put a start date of March fourth.
Okay, so with a start date of March fourth. If that's suitable.
This has maintenance supervisor.
Has maintenance.
Yeah.
I have a motion to have a second.
Second.
Motion is second, any discussion?
None.
And then on favor, I.
I.
I, same sign.
And are we gonna talk about Edison?
Yes.
So we are going to. Increase his pay to. What was the magical number?
Thirty four.
Thirty four sixty seven is what you.
It basically works out to what, seventy two, I believe?
It'd be.
Yeah.
Uh, twenty seven, seventy three, sixty per pay, not counting overtime.
So his pay would be starting at. Thirty four sixty seven, effective, you wanna do that March first, fourth also?
Let's say effective that same day.
Okay. That was my motion.
Have motions, have a second.
Second.
Have motion second, any discussion? Do you have a long favor, I?
I.
All post same sign.
And uh, would like to have the trustees approval for me to price some trailers, I can price, uh. Something for the haul mini hoe down to just lawnmowers.
I think we need to get those.
Get a variety of prices and.
Yep.
Just make sure the other ramp can stand.
Yeah.
Anything else, sir?
I have nothing to believe, do I?
Not that I don't. Anything else? I have nothing, they're taking a motion. I like it, have a good evening, gentlemen.
Guess we didn't ask the. The lady, uh, the presentation was.